Thank you for attending Saginaw City Council. We will start off with prayer and pledge. I will lead the prayer and also the pledge. For those who would like to participate, please do. Bow your heads. Most gracious heavenly Father, we come to you asking us to strengthen us during this holiday season. Give us the courage to make the decisions that we need to make for the betterment of the city. We ask that you look over each and every family that is represented here and on SGTV, as well as throughout the city. A special, a special, special prayer for the staff so that they can do the work that they need to do as well. Father, we ask these things in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well called, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Sylvia.
Present.
Councilmember Williams is absent. Councilmember Balls?
Present.
Mayor Proton Bench?
Present.
Councilmember Ostash is absent. Councilmember Garcia?
Present.
Councilmember Flores?
Present.
Councilmember Copeland is absent. And Mayor Moore?
Present.
You have six members present and three absent.
Thank you. This is a public meeting of the city council. Audience, I ask that you remain quiet and refrain from any loud, obnoxious cheering, booing, and anything that would disrupt the meeting. I'd like to remind everyone to put their phones, especially the council people, on silence, please. Madam Clerk?
I have a-
Do we have any announcements? I'm sorry.
I do, I have a few. This is the last week for the yard waste collection. Yard waste in containers or bags may be placed at the curb for collection on your regular trash day through Friday. Citizens are reminded that leaves may not be blown or raked into the street. The convenience station will be open this Saturday, December 9th, from 8:00 a.m. to noon. City residents can drop off items not picked up at the curb and other miscellaneous bulky items. And lastly, the Mid-Michigan Waste Authority is holding a holiday light recycling drive. The Public Works Building, located at 1435 South Washington, is a drop-off location. You may drop off your old lights Monday through Friday between 8:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m., and the drive runs through January 15th. Mayor, that would take us to public input, but we have no speakers signed up for tonight's meeting, so that takes us to council remarks.
Councilmembers, you have three minutes. Three minutes. You will be timed on the clock, and tonight we will begin. Let me say this first. Welcome back, Councilwoman Sylvia.
Thank you so much.
I know you're under the weather, but just wanted to acknowledge your return. We will start tonight with Councilwoman Garcia.
Good evening, concerned citizens of the community. Welcome back. I hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving. I know I did, and I was able to participate with Mayor Brenda at the Eastside Soup Kitchen. Great time. They're always looking for volunteers down there. Happy belated birthday to Diane Keenan, the director down there, and her staff. They do an amazing job. The need was definitely there, and it was great to participate and give back, especially on a holiday when, you know, some people don't have that day to spend with. So it was a great opportunity to be out there. Can't wait for the next one this month to go and see as well. Not too much really going on. Tomorrow, we will be doing the selection of the Christmas with Angels. We had over 200 applications, so the need is there. So we're still looking for volunteers next Friday at the Dow, starting at 5:00. Wrapping, so if you've got good wrapping abilities, come, because I don't. And I've been doing this for seven years, and I'm not getting any better, honestly. So just come on out if you can, or if you know anybody, any groups of churches or school kids, any volunteer hours, come on out. We're still looking for sponsors as well. Like I said, we have over 200 applications. We know that this is a hard time of the year for a lot of people that are, you know, struggling. So just trying to make a brighter Christmas and a special day for the kids to come out and have a good time with Santa and just fellowship with other people in the community. So if you guys want to come out and see what it's all about, it's great atmosphere. So we'll be doing that. And then next week, we will be doing the Toys for Tots as well, getting ready for that. So like I said, it's all about giving back to the community, not always being a receiver, but giving back. That's all I have to say, and have a good rest of the day. Stay warm.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Flores.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, like, good evening, Saginaw. Councilwoman Garcia had said, if anybody can support Christmas with Angels, it's a great venture that many people do benefit from. It's a really amazing organization that people are able to get gifts from and receive kind of support from the community. So it's very important. And then that's really it, except for if anybody has any information on the following murders: Keyshawn Banks, Kwan Lee, Quay Smithers, Mario Bulger, Pamela Whitson, Ryan Clemmons, Roy Woodson III, Cortez Hampton, Mazzy Runditson, or Jonathan Lamar Van, please call 1-800-422-5245. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Sylvia.
Thank you so much, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone that is here. I can't say thank you to the speakers because we didn't have any, but I'd like to say thank you for spending some of your day with the city council. Definitely appreciate your attendance, and everyone that may be online, I definitely appreciate you. And thank you for all the calls and text messages because it definitely was not easy not being here. It really wasn't. So thank you so much. You all have a beautiful rest of the day. That's it.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Balls.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have much to say today either, but I just wanted to remind people, six years ago this year was the March on Washington, talking about jobs, justice, and equality. Sixty years later, people are still talking about jobs, justice, and equality. I just feel a little disturbed when I don't see the makeup like the city. The city may be 48, 50% minority, but when I see people working on jobs in the city of Saginaw, pulling pipelines and anything like that, it's nowhere near Rachel the same. When I see people driving the city's trucks, I don't see the same. Police force nowhere. Even the firefighters, they do have some, but I'm just saying, you know, it's still about jobs, justice, and equality. And I think that we, as council people, maybe, I don't know if we can do it, maybe we should do it, maybe set policy to make sure we can hire the people in our cities. Because I see where kids who grow up in homes, who don't have fathers there, they don't see them get up and go to work in the morning. When they grow up, they don't want to go up and go to work in the morning because they don't see people doing that. And then that's something, you know, and everybody knows Saginaw, Michigan have a huge drug problem. When people don't have hope, they definitely going to use dope, and if they don't use it, they're going to sell it. So I think as a city, we can be more intentional about maybe trying to get people hired in the city. Or maybe we need to get the word out that there are places just hiring people for jobs and give them some type of hope and motivate them to get involved in trying to get some employment. I never, in my wildest dreams, thought I would become a pipe fitter. My father wasn't a pipe fitter. As a matter of fact, my mother divorced. My mother passed away, and I'm 16 years old. All I did was my father work at Saginaw St. Pierre. Lo and behold, I did get hired out there, but I never thought I would be a tradesman. I didn't know how to fix things. You know, I had a couple of butter knives at the house and a hammer fixed a few things, but never did I have two. But eventually, I did become a pipe fitter in the plant, and my son even had become a master plumber, probably because he saw me getting involved in the trades. So I know that association does bring about assimilation, and if we can be more intentional about trying to get people in the city hired for some of these jobs, it would make Saginaw a better place. So it's all right for people to have sympathy, but we need to have more empathy when it comes to the people and the lives of the city of Saginaw. I see every day how the veins of cars join outside the city, then go on inside the city when it's time for people to get off to work. So I prefer to see more people in the city working because it's going to make the place better, and people won't be calling us sag nasty. So I just want to put that on people's minds because a lot of things haven't changed, and I think we can do that. So thanks for letting me share.
Thank you. Next, we have Mayor Proton Bench.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening to everyone here and our member of the public. Hello to everybody at home. I hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving, and I really don't have anything else tonight, so thank you.
That was fast. Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to do a shout-out to the soup kitchen. We served over 400 families. That includes children, grandparents, the whole nine yards. It was a ball I look forward to doing the next year. I actually serve food. That's not an easy task. I could never be a waitress, never, because people act funny, and it's like, do you want some beans or not? You know, do you want some beans or not? I almost started throwing it, but then I had to catch myself. Angel Tree is an important activity that's happening in the city. We also have Santa's Workshop, which I'm involved in, and we've been doing that for the last three, four years. And all the organizations, all we really want to do is give a child a gift for Christmas. That's all we do. I'm always involved in a whole lot of stuff in the city. Me and the city manager just left a Memorial Cup meeting, and I probably clowned too much in it, but I'm all about the people. I'm all about you guys. It's not about me. I'm a servant. I came to serve, not be served. So when it comes to the betterment of this city, failure is not an option for me. Whatever I put my hands on, like, and I say, I put my hand in old things, that's serious with me. That's some serious stuff. I'm so thankful that we have people who come and tell us what's going on. As a council, we all have an obligation, and our obligation has to start within us. You have to know what you're really about. I can't tell people up here what to do because I just do stuff because I'm crazy like that. And I want to see Saginaw move. So this is getting cold. Check on the seniors. Check on your neighbors. Check on your neighbors. Just knock on door. You okay? You need something? It only takes a few minutes. And if you don't have your parents, I don't have my parents neither, but if you've got your parents, I suggest, I'm asking that you tell them you love them. Do something special for them. I said before, what the world needs now is a little more love. And if we don't start loving on one another, we're going to be right like we were before. We're doing it now, keep doing it. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk.
That takes us to reports from the manager.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you. And for an update on the Fairgrounds demo, that is out for bid. The bid closes on December 19th, so hopefully we'll get some good responses for that, and the project can get moving. Second item is the Government Finance Officers Association announced that the city of Saginaw has received the GFOA's Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for its budget for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2023. This is the 16th year in a row that the city of Saginaw has received this honor. In order to receive the budget award, the city must achieve the highest principles of governmental budgeting. These guidelines are designed to assess how well a city's budget serves as a policy document, a financial plan, an operations guide, and a communications device. Budget documents must be rated proficient in all four categories and the 14 mandatory criteria within those categories to receive the award. So congratulations to Yolanda Bland and her staff at OMB for achieving that again.
Beautiful.
And just a reminder that council did approve the next year's council schedule, so please note on the 12th, we have our strategic planning session, so that meeting will be on a Friday at 9:00 a.m. Most of the agenda items are going to be related to ARPA, where we're going to have an update on a food insecurity project, and also Guide House will provide an update. Next year is going to be critical for ARPA planning because of all the deadlines, so make sure that you have that marked down, and if you can attend, that would be helpful. The mayor did mention, she and I are both on the Memorial Cup Host Organizing Committee, so we're on the Logistics Subcommittee, so we'll be working on that. But if any of you have ideas about any items related to the Memorial Cup, just let me or the mayor know, and we can take them to the other committees. There's Volunteer Committee, Transportation, number of them. So if you have ideas, just let us know, and we'll take them back to that committee. And you may have seen Item 3 is a pretty significant zoning ordinance rewriting that we're planning to do in the next year. The zoning, our Planning Commission has received updates on this previously, but we wanted to provide an update here at council. So we have a partner for the firm that's, we plan to have that working on us here this evening to give an update. So Jill, you can come up to the podium.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
My name is Jill Bame, and I'm a partner at Giffords Webster. We are a multidisciplinary consulting firm. I'm in charge of the planning team and landscape architecture team and our GIS team. And we also have civil engineers and land surveyors as well in our companies. We're pretty well-rounded. We are very excited to be here and talking with you about the zoning rewrite project. We've talked with staff and been working through, spoken with your city attorney, and I've just got a few slides to share with you about the project itself to kind of give you a little background on what we are going to be doing. We've got several folks on our team that, I just came up this evening, but we have others that will be working on this project with us with varied backgrounds and skills and experiences relating to long-range planning and zoning efforts. Again, I kind of gave the overview of our firm. So we know that the city of Saginaw has a new master plan for the future, and you did that last year. That was completed. In there, your plan talks about improving neighborhood stability, enhancing a sense of place, strengthening community viability, and some of those things, and improving, enhancing public services, all along the lines of the things that you were sharing earlier under your council person comments. So I think that's very interesting that you're, that that sounds like the plan is reflecting the things that you identified as being important. As you may or may not know, zoning ordinance is one of the most important tools that the city has to implement that master plan's vision. So some of the ways in which we do that are by creating form-based regulations that can guide the way that our buildings and structures are built, especially in a way that impacts the public realm. So that's the spaces outside the buildings, or the spaces that are created by the buildings themselves, so as they interface with sidewalks and streets. Encourage a mixing of compatible uses. There, we're trying to, and this is the last one as well, a greater variety in building types and promoting flexibility to encourage development of vacant and underutilized buildings and properties. And so through this new zoning rewrite, we'll look to not necessarily regulating uses, like this use, yes, this use, no, but thinking more about what are the impacts that we're concerned about in these different areas? What are the concerns that the neighbors may have in terms of lights, or noise, or other kinds of activities that are happening in terms of those impacts? And how do we write rules for development that can help mitigate that? Other goals is that the process be clear and transparent and include community input, and the resulting code will be equitable and accessible. One of the things that's really important to us is not only that the zoning ordinance is able to be clear and understandable to staff, but also be clear and understandable to the community and the development community too, as well as our Planning Commission. And for items that come to you, we want everybody to understand what the process is for developing in the city of Saginaw, as well as understanding whether certain plans meet the criteria that we set forward together in that zoning ordinance. So we've got six big tasks associated with this. The first is the kickoff, and that's where we meet with staff and we get all of our timelines and our dates kind of coordinated. But the thing that we're really excited about is kicking it off with the community with a zoning 101. And we intend this to be a training, a refresher for Planning Commission, Council, Zoning Board of Appeals, and open it up to the general community as well, really explaining, what is zoning? Why do I care? I know it's probably not the topic that gets everybody fired up and gets them warm and fuzzy, but we think it's really a useful tool, and we want people to understand it. And also to understand how they can participate, because we say we want to have community engagement and a public process, but if people don't really understand what it is, they're not going to be as inclined to join us in that. So that's an important thing for us. The next thing is our zoning ordinance audit. So taking a look at your zoning ordinance and really understanding what's in there. Do we have places that, when we've amended it from time and time again, that maybe there's things that are inconsistent? Maybe we have terms that we're defining the same term a couple of different ways, kind of identifying that. And then really taking a look at the master plan itself and seeing what do we need to do to the zoning ordinance to enable that plan to come to life? Is there anything in there that's inconsistent, or there are new things that we need to add to make sure we do that? Public engagement, so I'll get into that in a second, but several opportunities for people to participate in this process. And then kind of the meat of everything, the updates, illustrations, and the draft zoning map, so all of the rule rewriting. And then number five, another exciting feature, is the transformation of the zoning ordinance from a document of text and couple of graphics to being highly graphic, as well as hyperlinked and accessible to the community that'll be posted on your website. And we're really excited about that, and I know staff is too, if you want to share any more with that. And then public hearing and adoption, so it'll be a whole new ordinance. We'll have that public hearing and adoption at the end of the process. We have included routine communications with staff so that we can stay on target, on task, and so that, too, if there's any concerns that come up by the community as we're going through this process, that we're on top of those things as well. So a couple of things. Again, zoning audit is a time where we can look at different parts of the zoning ordinance, and particularly, we'll be focused on aligning it with your new master plan. These are just some examples. Again, looking at changes that may be needed to update it with best practices, and then that report will be shared on the city's website as well. Our zoning 101, I mentioned that already. We have a couple of handouts, too, that we'd like to make available to the community on the website, as well as a recording of that event, so that people who are, they're not able to join us, whatever day that is, that they'll be able to find information online whenever they are finding themselves with some time to look at that. We will have steering committee meetings. Those will be open to the public. Where we've done this process recently, we have had members of the community come to the meetings and attend and ask questions, and then wait for responses. They come back, and they want to know, what did you do with my feedback? And so that's a really nice time. Those are usually rather informal meetings. And then a couple of workshops. We have up to three identified in our scope of work, where we may be focused on a topic, we may be focused on a geographic area. That will kind of decide as we go through the process and see what the needs are for those things. Virtual workshops. We'll have a website dedicated to the project and have that set up with information and ways for people to provide some inputs, provide some comments, and that'll be available around the clock as well for people who, whenever they are able to do that. And then ongoing communication there as well, so people can watch the process, understand the timeline, and then always go back to our zoning 101 or some of that informational, just baseline information, what is this project really all about anyway. After the audit and the draft are complete, and we have something to react to, because a lot of times, people don't know what we're really asking. Zoning can be kind of a big, cumbersome sort of term. This is an example of a project that we did in Horace, North Dakota, which is a very small city outside of Fargo. Hopefully, they will be adopting this ordinance at the end of this month. And when we were out there and did their open house, they had a complete rewrite. This is an example of some of the pages. You could see the pages from the code on this poster, and on the side is just a little bit of an explanation, sort of a guide to what people were looking at. And we were there to answer questions and take more of their feedback. The ordinance itself, when we go through the clear zoning conversion, will have a new structure. It'll have seven tabs for each of the sections of the zoning ordinance, and each one of those tabs will be clickable. If you're online, you can take your mouse, you just click back and forth, and you can go through that document. It will have hyperlinks, too. When you see a blue color, you'll be able to click on that for more information. The idea of that is when people open, they, maybe they have a particular property in mind, they may know what the zoning classification is, they just want to know, what can I do with this property? What are my setbacks for the property? When you open up that two-page spread, and then right in the middle of the ordinance, it'll give people that basic information, and then they can click through and get more information as they need it, but not bog them down with too much information up front before they really know what they're looking for. Updated graphics, you can see some of those examples here. This is, again, from Horace. It's a form-based code, so we're, they're looking at a lot of form-related structures and talking about that, prioritizing what the buildings look like, where they sit on the lot, over what the use is that they contain inside. More about the form-based code, again, we're thinking more about where that building is placed, and what we're trying to do there is to create that public realm, to create that sense of place, promote walkability, promote some vibrancy through the way that we regulate the buildings on properties as they develop and redevelop. Just more of that. Again, it'll be very graphic as well. We do have, our practices, our best practices, we worked with the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. We've been working with them for about 10 years on their redevelopment-ready communities program. And 10 years ago, when they were going through and creating, updating that program, we assisted the MADC with best practices two and three out of six, and that is the zoning ordinance and development review process. So we are very well-versed in that. Last year, we helped them with some zoning quick sheets, which were intended to be short. Well, they weren't really that short. They were several pages, but they identified a best practice that the MADC had identified. And then, instead of just giving people a bunch of examples, talked about why a community might want to consider that kind of approach and how they might tailor it for their own community, because we don't want to have cookie-cutter ordinances. They don't work in every community, because every community is different. The clear zoning ordinance, if you're familiar with any kind of an ordinance that you might see online, often they look different online when you print them out. And it's one of the nice things about the clear zoning ordinance is what you see on the screen, when it goes through your printer, if you want to print something out, it will look the same way. It'll have the graphics, it'll have the formatting, and it's all in place. So that's kind of a nice feature, and there's no annual fees for that because you get to host it on the city's website. And then we just handle the amendments after you process those here. So I think that was just a little summary of who we are, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about us or about our process. And I just thank you again for the opportunity to be here. We're very excited to be working with the city.
Do we have any questions?
I did have a question, but I think it's more for the city planners himself, I think. The question is, if I'm not mistaken, we had $400,000 that we're supposed to be building tiny homes with some time ago. I was wondering what happened to that money, or are we still planning on billing those?
I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with-
Maybe the city manager can answer that.
Yeah, that was through the block grant program, so that was pre-COVID it started, and that project didn't go to completion, so the money was reallocated in the block grant system.
It was reallocated?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. For the, when the application went out from July 17th to August 29th of the nine firms, there was only one that had responded. Is there a reason that the other eight didn't, or they just never?
Go ahead, Bob.
Well, I don't really have much of an answer for that, for firms not responding. I did call a couple of them that we, we sent out the RFPs for, and they stated that they just were inundated with work, and they just didn't have, didn't feel like they had the staffing capabilities to handle the project. I'm very pleased that Giffords Webster has responded to them, because I think they're outstanding firm. And if you look at the firms that we did send it out to, they really stand out in terms of the kind of activities that we want to have, like the ability to handle the form- like the ability to, to handle the form-based code as well as a standard zoning that we have. We're gonna have kind of a hybrid. And we'll go into that if we pass this in that zoning 101. But then the thing that I'm most impressed with is the clear zone format that they, they provide. Because that's not only going to help people understand zoning a little better, it'll probably relieve staff from having to answer so many questions about, you know, very easy answers that people can see once they see those graphics.
Thank you. And then also, will the clear zoning, the interactive zoning map be available before the public engagement or after?
After.
Right? And then how many folks are on your team?
Well, we have, I think, five dedicated to the project right now. And then we have other people in the firm should we need additional assistance. But we do have those, those folks attached. And just to kind of, maybe, I, I can't speak for anybody else, but I know that our firm, everybody is busy. And, and when we see RFPs come out, we take a look and we say, you know, is it, is this a project that we want to work on? Do we have the capacity to do it? Do we have the capacity to create a proposal for it? Is it the work that aligns with our, our mission and our values and our skills? This project did. It hit all of the, those buttons for us. We are really good at zoning. We really enjoy it. We like doing the long-range plans. We love doing master plans. But this is where we get to help that plan get life by creating the rules that, that are surrounding that. And we also really enjoy the public engagement and the educational component of it as well. And then the clear zoning product is just something that nobody else does, so.
Yeah.
So yeah, that's, that's the only reason, that's the only thing I can say about why we submitted is because of all those things, so.
Yeah, I'm glad to see the amount allocated to public engagement.
Yeah, we're really excited about that.
Yeah, likewise. All right, thank you so much.
Any other questions? We thank you so much. We entrust that Mr. Robert, Mr. Robert see you good? We gonna take him at his word at this point. So thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Can't wait to work with you.
Thank you very much. Same with us. And we look forward to seeing you again soon.
Okay.
That concludes the management update.
Do we have any questions about anything the city manager said that you might want to ask him about? Please keep it directly on what he talked about. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. You were talking about.
Hold your mic back so we hear.
You were talking about the committees for the Memorial Cup. Can you send that to an email or some of all those committees, please?
Yeah, I can send you a summary of what they are.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I don't know what she said.
It's all right. He heard her.
Y'all hear?
He heard her.
Y'all heard it, that's good. Okay. Madam Clerk.
That takes us to the consent agenda.
The, I'm sorry. The agenda has been available at City Hall and on, and on the city webpage and on SGTV Channel 191. I need a motion to approve the agenda, leaving room for exceptions.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved as support. Do we have anything that we want to exclude? Hearing none, call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Ayes have it, Madam Clerk.
We are at Boards, Commission, and Committee Reports.
Do we have any board reports? Any commission reports? Hearing none. Madam Clerk.
We are at Resolutions. We have one on the agenda. It's approving the polling location change for Precinct 10.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Can I get an explanation on that one, please?
Yeah, we had to get the vote down first. It's been moved as second. Open for discussion, Councilman Ball.
Yeah, what, where's Precinct 10 at and what they want to do with it? I'm sorry if I didn't read it.
Precinct 10 is currently St. Dominic's and we're moving it to Thompson Middle School.
Okay, that's like right across the street now.
Right, right, that little job.
All right, that's fine.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Do we have any miscellaneous? Any miscellaneous motions? Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. I would motion to not be paid for this meeting and it be put back into the general fund.
I'm not, help me, Amy. Can't you do that?
There need, I mean, we should wait to see if there's even a second before we take it up for discussion.
Okay. Mr. Seid, can you read it again, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Flores moved to not be paid for this meeting and have the money go back into the general fund.
Now, we need a second, so we can go into discussion.
Before the second, I can, I just want to be clear, the motion. Did he say for him not to get paid, just you?
Yep. Correct. Yeah.
If that's what, if that's his wishes, I agree with that motion. But that's what he wants. May make him feel better, maybe feeling, maybe feeling Christmasy or something like that.
Yeah, it's a holiday thing.
Let me tell your son about that, though.
It's a motion on the floor. So now do we talk about it? What do we do, Miss Amy?
What's the second? Mayor, yes, that's actually an improper motion because it's in the charter that you're paid per attendance at a meeting.
That's what I was gonna say, but since y'all said it, it's in our charter. It is really gracious of you. But if you want to get your check cashed and give it back in, you're more than welcome to do that.
Point of information, who would I give it to?
I didn't hear you. What did you say?
Who would I give it the money back to if I did?
Give it to your son.
He's got a bunch of stuff. Who would I turn it back to?
Give it to the Big Brothers and Sisters Club, where?
Christmas with angels.
Who would I turn it back to?
The treasure.
Treasure?
I asked that we look into this and necessarily people give back to Mr. Flores on his donation. And he can donate it any way he wants, it's his money. So what can I say?
None.
Do we have any more motions? Hearing none, I need a motion.
No, Madam Mayor, I think you need a motion, or I think you need to vote that down.
Say that again?
Yeah, he was seconded.
Are we still in discussion?
I didn't hear you, Miss Amy. What did you say?
There needs to be a vote on it. You did have a motion and a second. You're still in discussion on that.
Oh, that's right. We did have a motion as second. All those in favor, oh, I'm sorry, did you have something else to say?
Yeah, I just wanted to explain the motion. So we had had a meeting on the 9th of November. And it was just a mistake that it happened to allocate fireworks for the holidays. It was a four-minute meeting. If I got paid that much money, I would make $1,872 on a full-time job. So I believe that it was important for us to come back. But given the length of the meeting, and I'm happy that everybody did come to vote, last meeting I had voted that we all not get paid. But I think in hindsight, it's more important just to take personal responsibility. So that's where it's coming from, for those that have questions. But I should have motioned that at the meeting on November 9th. And that's it.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor. It's been moved as second. All those in favor of the motion of, can you read it again, please, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Flores moved to, for him to not be paid for this meeting and have the money go back into the general fund.
All those, yes, Councilwoman. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No. I thought we were voting.
Roll call.
What? I'm confused. How are we supposed to vote?
We couldn't do that.
Roll call.
We voted it down.
Councilmember Sylvia.
Can I have a question or no?
Yes.
I thought we couldn't do it.
You cannot.
And that's why we were voting it down.
So why could, well, how could we vote it?
Because I'm confused.
Motion was still made.
The motion was made, we gotta vote on it, up or down? Okay? Up or down? And you're right, I did vote inappropriately. I should have said no. Okay? So let's do a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Sylvia.
No.
Councilmember Williams.
No.
Councilmember Balls. Mayor Proton Bench.
No.
Councilmember Ostache is absent. Councilmember Garcia.
Nay.
Councilmember Flores.
Nay.
Councilmember Copeland is absent. You have.
No.
We wasted more time on this than we did on the whole council.
Trying to do the right thing. Takes some time for them.
Okay, so we have any more motions? I need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved as second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.[1791.88]